The scope of duties that a school board member performs is wide ranging, from making decisions about curriculum to creating and upholding board policies to managing fiscal responsibilities.
The way that these responsibilities are prioritized could determine the academic success and achievement for Collier County.
The members of the school board have the ability to influence the quality of education and impact the lives of students within their county.
A candidate's morals and stance on pressing issues can determine what changes are going to be made if they are elected to the school board.
Candidates that have held other positions of leadership or have been involved in the community have their accomplishments to speak for them. Each candidate has also published their own websites to share their bios, individual platforms, and ideas.
In an effort to help facilitate Collier County voters making informed decisions, the WAVE has conducted interviews with the school board candidates discussing their goals for their term on the board as well as new things they may bring to the table.
The candidates were asked a standard set of questions ranging from their background, philosophy of education, and budgeting. Follow-up questions are only based on whether a member of the editorial board has a need for clarification.
In the interests of non-bias and non-partisanship, the editorial board at the WAVE has decided to present the raw, unedited interviews of each Collier County School Board candidate on our website. The candidates were made aware of this in our invitation to them.
Elections have consequences and voting is your right. If you are not eighteen, your voice can still be heard. Engage with your family and your neighbors.
And this is your editorial panel?
Yes.
Helena, there's like a small trash can like right over here.
Thank you.
This is our boardroom. We've got a nice view of the gym up here, so.
Great.
Board members like to watch the games from here if they're here.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, well, I'm ready if you guys are ready. You ready?
I'm ready.
Perfect. Okay, so I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for coming by here today. We truly appreciate you taking the time to be here with us. The purpose of these interviews is to inform voters and stakeholders on the importance of the role of the school board in education and to increase student involvement in education. So to begin, I'd like to introduce ourselves as the editorial board, and then we will proceed.
Okay.
So, starting with me, I'm Jorge Rodriguez. I'm the editor-in-chief, we met last week.
Alright, okay.
I'm Sophia Lowery and I'm the executive editor.
I'm Madison Moore and I'm the managing editor.
What's your name?
Madison Moore, and I'm the managing editor.
Okay. Now, I may not remember your names.
That's fine.
Yeah.
You'll remember mine because I'm only one person.
Once again, I'm Helena Davis and I'm the opinions editor of the WAVE.
And then I'm Annabelle and I'm the features editor of the WAVE.
Great.
I'm Elle Richardson. I'm our science editor.
Great. I'm Grant Terrell. I'm the web design editor. Okay.
I'm Logan Yarnow and I'm the digital media editor.
Well, I hope you take a good picture. Well, I appreciate meeting all of you. Much good to me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Elle's got a little bit of a scratchy voice today, but she's working through it.
Well, I've got a little bit of a scratchy voice all the time.
Okay, well, first, I'd like to discuss any background that you may have. So is there any background experience that you have that qualifies you to become a school board member?
Well, yes. I actually substitute taught for about three years. And I never was able to get up here to Marco Island, but I did a lot of schools in Naples area. Barry Collier and some of the middle schools, Golden Gate, and had great experience with them. I loved it. I enjoyed it. I probably should have been a teacher, but then I didn't go to college, so I just had to hold into just substitute teaching. But it was fun. And I had, matter of fact, I had a lot of, the students writing me little notes saying, "You're the best substitute teacher I ever had." And that's a real plus, you know?
Yeah.
Something to be thankful for. As far as the school board and so forth and so on, I've been going to school board meetings for over thirty-five years. And I have approached them with petitions, with suggestions, with actually warnings and everything else. And was completely ignored. I got a few things passed, but mostly ignored. And I said, "Well, if I'm gonna get anything accomplished, I'm gonna have to be on the inside where I have a vote." Because I can speak all I want to on the outside and they listen, but they make their own decisions. And so I decided to run for school board, even at my age. I said, "I believe I can help in some way." And so I decided to run for it. And fortunately, I had the most votes in the primary election over the incumbent. And I'm hoping that I'll do the same thing in the general election.
Thank you.
We've reviewed your campaign materials. Could you tell us what best describes what you hope to accomplish on the board?
Well, there are a number of things that I want to accomplish. You probably don't know this, but because y'all are younger, but I've gone through a lot of time in school. And there is bias, there is censorship, there is rewritten history. And so I will work towards correcting those things with whatever I can do legally. My platform is based on returning our American culture to the classroom. I know what American culture is. I came up in it. Things have changed drastically, and I think we need to get back to what the founders established as far as our history and learning about our history. You know, President Woodrow Wilson, I think it was, said, "A nation that doesn't know what it was yesterday, doesn't know what it is today nor what it's trying to do." They were trying to do a futile thing if we don't know where we came from or what we've been about. And so that's what I'm trying to do is get back in where I can have a vote and try to make some changes on the inside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a specific reason that you're running for a seat or reelection on the school board?
Why, I'm running for what?
A seat or reelection on the school board.
I think that was my same question, wasn't it? Now, maybe I'm not hearing you correctly.
Is there a specific reason that you're running for a seat or reelection on the school board?
Well, I'm not running for reelection because I've never been on the school board. So I'm just running as a candidate for the first time. I've never run for any office before. I just saw the necessity and I said, "I have to do this." For the children's sake. I have grandkids in the Collier school system, and I want them to have the very best education. We need to work on the literacy. It's in the founding era, our country had a ninety-five percent literacy rate, higher than the rest of the world because of the educational system that the founders established. Theirs was not reading, writing, arithmetic, even though that was there. Their reason of their way for causing students to think for themselves was called research, reason, relate, and record. The four Rs. And there were young people going to college by age ten to fifteen. You don't see that today unless a person's maybe got a high IQ. Does that answer your question or not?
Thank you.
What previous accomplishments of the board do you plan to build upon or make further contributions to?
Well, the founders, I don't know whether y'all have read any of our history in the country and where we came from as a nation or what, but the founders established our nation on morals and ethics. That's why we had such a great nation and were the longest ongoing republic in the world. And the, if I'd have thought about it, I probably brought one of the first textbooks. Have you ever heard of the New England Primer? You have, okay. The New England Primer was the first public school textbook. It was written in sixteen ninety and was used all the way till the early nineteen hundreds. The way they taught the ABCs was because they were moral and they taught morals. They taught the ABCs like this. A, in Adam's fall, we send all. B, heaven defined the Bible mind. C, Christ crucified for sinners died and all through to Z. And they done some of the questions they had there. But remember, this was a sectarian religion. It was not denominational. They mentioned no particular religion, but it was based on the Bible. And so one of the questions would be for these young people, who was the first man? Who was the first woman? What was the first commandment and so forth? So they had moral stories in there, and that's why they had, we had a good moral nation because they taught morals. You know, morals are not automatic. They have to be taught. If you don't teach morals, then a person has an inclination to go the wrong way. And so morals have to be taught. They have to be taught that there's a right and wrong way to do things. And that if you do things that are wrong, there are consequences. Now, we say we have discipline today. Well, a certain amount of discipline, sure we have. But I won't go any further than that because we probably have a lot of questions.
Thank you. So now that we've established your background, we'll shift our attention towards schools. So in the last five years, there have been two major hurricanes and a pandemic. So how would you go about supporting the students and staff at an event of such a crisis like that?
Well, I don't know how much a school system is supposed to do other than helping the students in whatever way they can with, like, I think the schools today are here are supporting what happened in this hurricane. And that's about all I would know about helping the students make sure that they can still get their lessons and work out the details with whatever problems they're facing. That's the only thing I know about that part.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think you could specify how the school board should support its students?
How they should support the students? Yes. They should definitely support the students in giving them the very best education they can have. To eliminate illiteracy. We've got, in Cary County schools, we have a thirty-eight percent literacy rate. That's not even acceptable. We have to start with the basics, reading, writing, arithmetic. Matter of fact, I don't mind telling you this because it was an experience I had recently. I was in a shoe store and I ordered some shoes. They only had one pair. I wanted two pairs, so I had to order the other pair to have them shipped to me. And so I had to fill out an order. So I filled out the order and I signed it. And the young fellow there looked at it and he says, "I can't read that signature. I did not take cursive writing in school." My question would be, and I didn't ask him this, if you can't read cursive writing, how will you ever be able to read the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the Declaration? So we have a problem and we have to solve that problem. And it has to start with the school board, the superintendent in that area. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Please describe what you believe a perfect school would look like.
You'll have to speak a little louder. These hearing rates are not very good.
Okay.
Helena can say it very good. Yeah, alright, so please describe what you believe a perfect school would look like.
Okay. Well, actually, on my card that I give out to people, I have it right here. There's five things that is necessary to have a educated student who will eventually become our national leaders. First of all, they need discipline. There's some things, there's problems in discipline that I see, and I think they need to be corrected. First of all, the discipline should really start in the home. But in the general public, there should be discipline, and in schools specifically, there should be discipline. And this is gonna be funny to you probably, but I just read that Alabama is instituting the Board of Education, I'd call it. I went to the principal's office one time when I was in school and he used the old Board of Education on me and I didn't want to go back again. Now, you may think, "Well, that's abuse. That's punishment." Look at what kids do today that to me is more punishment than everything I ever had with a whipping or anything else. They're doing, what do you call them? The boards. Riding these boards, you know, the
Skateboard.
Skateboard.
Everything like that, riding them, going over rails and everything else. And sometime falling and breaking arms and everything else. That's something they're doing for fun. Discipline should be in schools. Firm discipline. And that's all I'll say about that. What else was it?
Just what you would describe a perfect school as.
Okay. Second thing is textbooks. As I mentioned to you, there has been proven, and I've got books on it, bias, censorship, rewritten history. So we need to change the textbooks. Now, that's not the school board's problem. That's the state's problem. Actually, the nation's problem. So we need to, let me give you a short story. In the eighties, I was in contact with the Gabblers from Texas. The Gabblers, the boy came home one day and said to his dad, "Dad, this doesn't look right in my textbook." The dad looked at it and it says, "That is not right." So they started examining textbooks. And the first year they did this, they found over five thousand factual errors. You would think that textbooks should be factual. And so eventually, they started going to school board meetings, bringing this out to them. They were laughed at at first, but eventually they started listening. And so we need some people today to listen to what's happening in our textbooks and read them themselves. And I have found some errors myself in the textbooks. Actually, in two thousand six, I was on the Florida, for our county here, for our district, I was on the textbook committee. And I had to examine the textbooks and then go to a certain place, I can't remember what city it was. And critique these things and tell them where we thought there was errors and problems and so forth. And so that was two thousand and six. That's a long time ago. I don't know where I'm going with that, other than the fact that we do need to change things. The textbooks are a problem. Now, we've got good news. Governor DeSantis has instituted ELA, English Language Arts and Civics to come back into the schools. The civics will bring in, of course, a lot of things that we need and have needed for a long time. The next thing is morals and virtues. As I mentioned to you, the founders established a nation with morals. Now, was everybody moral? No. Was everybody Christian? No. Was everybody Jew? No. But they were, there was morals. Matter of fact, the Northwest Ordinance, one of our first documents back then, states this in part three. It says, "Religion, morality, and knowledge being necessary to good government and the happiness of mankind, schools and means of education should forever be encouraged." In other words, they wanted schools, but they wanted religion, morality, and then knowledge. Because if you have knowledge without morals, you're just gonna be an educated, I don't know what word to use, it wouldn't be nice. The next thing is, we need our students to know where we came from as nations, as I mentioned. We need to get them knowledgeable in our Declaration, our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and the founders of our nation, what they stood for, why they did what they did, and things of that sort. And then the last thing is respect. Respect for others, respect for yourself, respect for authority, and respect for property. We're not seeing that today. When you have people that are destroying property that belongs to others, that's just totally wrong. And lighting fires, killing people, and it's happening, where did they come from? They came from the public schools. They were public school. Is that the fault of public schools? Maybe to some degree it may be because they were not taught morals and virtues. Now, I may get a little flak for this, but it's what established as fact coming from the founding era. They had a great nation, and we still have a great nation. We should continue to do the things they did in order to have great students and great leaders.
How far do, I guess to what extent do you feel we should uphold those values?
To what extent should we?
Uphold those values?
Well, everybody should uphold those values. In other words, if you have a moral people, you'll have a moral nation. That's just common sense. The reason we are having the problem we have today that I never grew up with. Now, listen, I graduated in nineteen fifty-five, and things were totally different then. The worst thing that would happen in school is chewing gum, running in the halls, cheating on a test, or minor things like that. There was none of this type of thinking. But, how can I say it? You can look at statistics, and you can disagree with me if you want to. It's okay. You can look at statistics. In nineteen sixty-two and sixty-three, when the Bible and prayer were taken out of schools, the SAT scores fell to the rock bottom and have never come back to the nineteen sixty levels. That should speak volumes to people. I have statistics on what happened from that time until, let's just say, five, ten years ago anyway. Crime went up, student crime I'm talking about. Crime went up. I'd wed mothers, went drastically out of sight. And all these things, I can give you statistics on, but I don't have them with me right now. So you need to have a good moral nation in order to have, I mean, students, if you're gonna have a good moral nation. I could quote you some of the founders, if you'd like, about morals. I can tell you that Samuel, well, not Samuel Adams, let me go to or Thomas Jefferson. So if a nation, now this is where schools are involved, if a nation expects to be ignorant and free in a civilization, it expects what never was and never will be. You have to have people that are educated so they can read and write and do the things they should be doing as individuals. George Washington says, well, let's see, I could skip to another one. I'm trying to think of another one, education.
We can circle back to it.
Come back to it if you'd like.
Something's come up.
Okay. Next question.
What else?
Do you feel that instilling Christianity in the Bible into schools in order to install morals in children creates a kind of bias towards a certain religion in students?
Well, no, because our education for the last three hundred years before this century, or this last century, was indeed based on biblical principles, Christian principles. Because we were, eighteen ninety-two, the Supreme Court case, they examined eighty-seven different areas along with documents, court cases, and everything else. And they came to the conclusion that this is a religious people, this is indeed a Christian nation. Notice, we're established as a Christian nation. Now, you go to Israel, that's a Jewish nation, and they go by the scriptures, the Torah. You go to other nations and they have their own religion. This was established as a Christian nation according to the Supreme Court in eighteen ninety-two. You can read the case. And so have we gotten away from that? Yes. Well, what do you, should we, let's say if we didn't have Christianity as our basis, what would be the next best thing? It would be the Jewish religion. The Torah. Why? Because the New Testament or Christianity is based on the Torah. If you go back to our very beginnings, all of our laws were based on deuteronomy. And so it was all biblically based, all of our laws. And now, they think we don't need those things. Well, you see the results. Does that answer your question or?
I think so. Thank you.
In other words, I'm not saying that we should, and we can't, because we shouldn't, because the Constitution says we shouldn't. We're not to establish any state or national religion. That's out. So I want you to quote me on that. I want you to know that I'm saying, "I'm not trying to establish Christianity in schools." No, it's just that it's our national religion, and whoever wants to have it can have it. If you don't, you can have anything that you want because it's open to all religions. We're not to be biased in that. But see, I don't know what, do you know anything at all about the so-called separation of church and state case? That was in nineteen forty-two, and why we now have a so-called separation of church and state?
Can you name that case?
Do you know anything about it?
Can you, do you know the name of that?
Okay, let me explain it to you. This, in nineteen forty-two, they got together and they, Thomas Jefferson, back when he was in office, got a letter from the Danbury Baptist. And they were very concerned about the fact that their religious liberties would be stomped on, so to speak. And so they wrote to President Jefferson, and he responded to them. And he said to the Danbury Baptist, and he told him exactly what he was trying to say. That is, that no, no state or national religion is going to be established. However, he said, "The reason this is, there's a wall of separation between the church and the state." Notice, we don't want a state or national religion, but we certainly want religious people, whether it's Christians or Jews or whatever. We want religious people to be involved in government because that's where their morals come from. We want moral people to be involved in the government. So here's what happened. They took eight words, separation of church and state, I mean, I'm sorry, a wall of separation. They took those words out of context. They didn't read the whole letter, which they should have done, and they would have realized they couldn't make that decision. They took eight letters. Now, first of all, as you know, courts always look for a previous precedent. In other words, was this case ever used before? Was this letter ever used before? Yes, it was used one time before that, way back a hundred-three years prior to that. And they never said a thing about separating the church from the state in that letter, in that court case. The second thing is, they didn't use the Constitution. Supreme Courts are supposed to use, or any court, is supposed to use the Constitution as their basis on any decision they make. Am I right or wrong? You agree with that? They did not use the Constitution. They used the letter. Not a good reason to make a decision for the rest of the nation. And so they established their doctrine of separation of church and state. It's a false doctrine. And I don't mind anybody calling me down on it because I'll face them off with it. Any other questions along those lines? Any questions there?
We have a follow-up.
Yeah, I think along a similar vein, I'd like to ask how you feel schools should then approach controversial topics like religion or politics? How should it be discussed in school?
There are a lot of controversial things happening right this red hot minute, as you know, in the schools. And I don't need to mention them because I don't need to get on another subject. How they teach anything in school, there should be a balance. For instance, when I was examining the textbooks, okay, go back to that. I examined textbooks at one time, and there was three pages on Mohammedan. Two pages, no, it was one page on Christianity and a half a page on Judaism. Well, that's an imbalance. Now, later on, they did change that. Now later on, they did change that and there was, I think. Six or seven pages on Mohammedism, six or seven pages on Christianity, six, seven pages on Judaism. That was a right balance. So if, if we do things correctly, if we balance them out right, then no one should really complain. But equal things should be equal things. If you're gonna have something here, you should have something here. There's something going on in the schools here, and I won't mention it. That is not equal. And one of the things that I hope to do when I get in there is to say, this is not equal, let's make it equal. Now, have any of you, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight of you, have any of you? Heard of or know of the non-discrimination, um. Rule, it's called the, um, Religious Expression in Public Schools. Do you know any of that? Any of you? You, you know about it? Tell me about it.
You're not supposed to express like or force your religion on other people.
I'm sorry?
You're not supposed to force your religion on other people.
That's not part of that rule. I'm sorry, but it's not. It has nothing to do with that. It was passed in twenty seventeen. And it was called the Students and Employees Religious Liberties Act. And what it does is it. Um. Balances secularism from religion. Here's what it says basically. Anything that the secular crowd can do, the religious crowd can do. And I didn't mean to be unkind. I wasn't trying to be unkind. But, um, I've found, this is not unusual, I have not found one student or one teacher. That knows about it. I've asked them this. And they're supposed to know, they're supposed to read the rules and regulations. I'm supposed to rule, read the rules and regulations when I get on there. And I better know them well because somebody's gonna call me on it. Um, so I find that there's a, a lack of. What's the way I could put it? Distribution of the facts to the teachers and the students. Now, the teachers are supposed to sign a form saying they have read that and they understand it. And so it's a problem when I can talk to teachers and students and they don't know what's happening. I hope this is not offending y'all in any way, but I'm just trying to bring the truth out, okay? Is, does that answer your question for you?
I think so, thank you.
Okay.
Um, how would you advocate to ensure that children aren't forced into a one-size-fits-all learning model?
That's part of what I plan to see doesn't happen.
Okay.
That's what you call indoctrination.
Okay.
There is indoctrination in the schools today and it needs to be eliminated. They're not, the stu-, the teachers are not there to indoctrinate, they're there to teach. And when you get away from what your basic job is, matter of fact, I've had some of the teachers tell me. There are so many programs going on that I don't have the time to teach. What I'm supposed to be teaching because of time constraints with these other programs. So there's too many programs, that's another thing I, I'm going to address when I get in there. Is we need to make sure that the programs are not overriding what the teachers are paid for. That is to teach basics, math, science. Geography, reading, writing, those things. Okay?
Lastly, we'd like to ask some questions regarding budgeting and CCPS. How do you think the board should support schools in CCPS regarding safety and security?
They have a tremendous safety plan here already in place. They've got everything except the teachers. Uh, I thought having teachers, uh, weaponized would be a good way to do things, but they've said, no, they can't do that. But they're doing everything else that is correct and positive and beneficial as far as keeping the students safe. Uh, I went and talked to the safety, um, uh, head there in the schools. And he laid out everything that they were doing and it was a criteria that I already had laid out for me. And he, they're, they're covering all the bases there. So the schools are as safe as they could possibly make them without. Someone arming all the teachers, you know? Now, does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next question is, what experience do you have with complicated budgets? When you're given a budget for a district, what will be your process to determine if it's a good budget for the system?
Well now, I'm a, um, painting contractor. And of course my business went down the tube in twenty twenty, but, um, so I have to have a budget for my men and to run my business. So I'm familiar with budget. Now, in the military, I was in medical materials specialist. Uh, I had to deal with bringing in supplies, putting them on the shelf, card stocking them, you know, making sure that the cards are right. And so I had experience with budgets in that sense there, plus my own personal business. Um. I have some ideas that I believe will be beneficial. Uh, when I was in insurance, I was a staff manager. I had five men on my staff. Which meant that I had to see that they produced or otherwise I wouldn't be a staff manager in the long.
Right.
Um, I had a. Let's see, a principle that I used that the first year I was a staff manager. Our staff led the entire district and there were five other staffs in the district. And we outproduced all of them. Also, uh, Charles Swab, this is of course before even my age. Um, I was probably being a little kid. Um, but Charles Swab. Increased his steel production. He was not the manager, the, he'd ask the manager, okay, why were, are we not doing a better job here? And the manager couldn't give him an answer. And he used the same principle and overnight. Increased his steel production, boom, 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 boom. And he didn't have to say a word.
Thank you.
Okay.
And what are the main issues you believe are hurting teacher retention and how would you plan to combat those issues?
Well, one thing I, in my own personal business, I never had anyone quit. They didn't wanna quit. Why did they not wanna quit? I paid them well. Now, we have administrators, uh, uh, administration people that are making three to five times what a teacher is making. That's imbalance. Teachers are the most important thing we have. You have to have administration, I understand that, but teachers are the ones we should be paying well to retain them. Um, like I said, I never had one, I've had a, a staff of seven men at one time, never had any of them wanna quit. Um, does that mean that I made a fortune? No, I probably could have made a lot more money if I'd have paid them minimum wage or something like that. But no, I feel like if a person is worthy to work for me, then he needs to be paid well. Okay? Is that answer for you?
Yes, thank you.
May I ask you how you feel that teacher salaries, how do you feel that you would raise teacher salaries? How do you think you would go about doing that?
How would I do it?
Yes.
Well, I, I, since I haven't seen the entire budget yet and don't know how it works completely. I, I don't know if I could make a definite decision, but I am going to, there's thirty-one different departments. In the budget, okay, thirty-one. I tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to meet with the heads of each one of those departments. And have a long talk with them, ask them some questions. And see where we can make changes that are necessary to reduce the budget. And to, uh, benefit the teachers at the same time. So I can't answer some questions right now because I just don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all the questions that we prepared for you, but is there anything else that you would like to add or that you feel that we missed?
Well, one thing that I hope to reestablish is. Are, have you ever heard of, um. Alexis de Tocqueville? Okay, he was a French writer, author, author and investigator, I think I'd, I'd call it. And he called us. An exceptional nation because in France, religion and politics were separate. They were never involved together. He said, but I found, when I came in, he, he wrote the book and he said, I came to America, said, I went into the factories, I went to these places, that place. Said, but when I went into the churches and when I understood that the church and the state were working together. I'm saying in my own words, that's not the way, words he would use. He said, this is an unusual situation. Said they worked together perfectly and everything is, he says, I call this an exceptional nation. Uh. And that's why he wrote the book and he, it was volumes. It wasn't just a short book. Uh, and so I think that we are indeed an exceptional nation. I think we'll come out of this. Problem we have right now with the destroying property and, and, um. Trying to, um, put pit one American against another American, whether, no matter what color they are, that's wrong. We should have a balance there. Uh, I have had black men work for me. I've had other types of men work for me. And I have white men work. I'm not partial to these types of things and we need to be impartial and are looking at other people. We all bleed red.
Thank you.
No matter what the skin color is.
Thank you very much.
Okay? Well, I hope that you'll put this together in a great way because I would like the people out there to know. Um, if you put it together and here's what happens, here's why I don't like to have interviews. Because the news media, and I'm gonna fuss at them right now. The news media will take some of the things I've said and it's happened in the past, twist it around to their own benefit. And to make me look like, I, I don't know what I'm talking about. Um, Fox News, and I don't mind people knowing this either. Fox News has been the only one that I've approached when I was putting Bible into school, for instance, and other things. That gave a, what I call a just report. And some reports I've had recently from some of these organizations here have been just, some of them have not been, but, um. It is what it is.
How I, um, plan to cut out will be Logan's job. We were speaking of doing it just to everyone, sorry.
I'm sorry?
Um.
It's, it's meant to be a fair, it's, it's.
The full interview video.
Yeah, we're posting the entire video, no. Correct.
We'll have it in the first.
Well, I would hope that'd be true.
There, yeah, there's, there's no twisting involved. That is not the goal of, like I said earlier, that's not the goal of our interviews, so.
We're just simply informing people so that they know more about the school board.
Exactly.
Well, I hope I've given you what you've asked for in as large a manner as I know how. And I hope that it'll be beneficial to you. Um. If I could say anything right now. I teach a class on America's Godly Heritage. It's a three-hour class. It's not easy. Um, I also would like to teach a class on the constitution. I have the books on it and I just haven't gotten around to that yet. Uh, but I teach a lot of classes, um. Um. The other one, that was the other one, um. I know we've talked, I talked one just before the elections and I can't remember the name. It's okay, I'm eighty-five. Listen, I appreciate your attention. I appreciate your questions.
We appreciate your time.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
I hope that will not only give you the information you're looking for and you can get it out to the general public. But I hope it will also be something you'll think seriously about yourself. I don't know where you came from, if your background is concerned. Uh, you may go to church, you may not go to church, you may go to synagogue, it doesn't make any difference. Let me surprise you, okay? Where do you think I attend religious services?
It's not our job to assume.
Make any kind of guess you want to.
Would rather not.
I don't have a guess.
No, no.
I attend a messianic Jewish synagogue. So if they're gonna complain about me wanting to put Christianity in there, then I think they're barking up the wrong tree. Um, the, um, an Orthodox Rabbi, Daniel Lappin. Wrote a book called America's Real War and he said in that book. I don't wanna lose what we have in America. As a Jew, I have more freedom, and all Jews do. More freedom in America than any other country in the world. And I hope that the Christians that established this nation will keep it and keep it sovereign. So we have a great heritage. Uh, we have, and we've had great leaders in the past. And, um, so I hope indeed we can keep our sovereignty. The leaders today are, to me, frightening. Probably it'd be the word I'd say, frightening. And I'm not seeing any particular, um. Party or anything. It's just frightening what's happening to America. And we need to get back to the basics and do the things we ought to be doing for our nation. Or we won't have a nation if, I don't know what you've been taught about communism, socialism or Marxism. But it's very prevalent today in America and it's wrong. If you notice the backgrounds of those things, you'll notice that there's been millions killed under communism. Under socialism and under Marxism. It doesn't work, it's never worked, and Americanism works. And I wish I could convince millions of that. But anyway, I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll look forward to reading your article. Now, you're gonna send me a copy, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We'll email, we'll email the link to, to the article to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
That was very much. I appreciate you very much.
Helen and, uh, Ann Bob will walk you out.
Okay, all right. We'll be blessed.
Thank you.